This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Which Barry?
Present.
Lady Ballance? Erica Raphael?
Here.
Dean Kirkpatrick?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
Kent Pownell?
Here.
All right, everybody stand for the pledge, please. Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to discuss approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pennell?
If I have the current agenda, we need to add under approval of minutes the two special meetings of the ninth of February and the 31st of January.
I believe we have the 31st done. I don't think the ones for the ninth are done yet.
They are done. They just came out today.
Okay.
And everybody has a copy.
Looking at them now. Anything else? Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. No approval of the minutes for January 23rd?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Maiden seconded. Any discussion? No discussion on 23rd? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? January 23rd. Next will be January 31st, special meeting. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Discussion's open. Changes, deletions, amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And February the 9th. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
The additions, deletions, changes?
Do we have a quick minute to read it?
Yes, sir. Any questions? Are you still reading?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Next will be commission, committee, authorities, reports, and expired terms. Planning. It is as it is. There's no new nominations. CA PC. No new nominations. Just crocked.
We have one for CA PC.
Send her. I'm sorry.
We have an application for CA PC.
Mr. Bridwell is supposed to be coming in to reapply for his vacant position. And they have one in their hand, I believe, from Mr. McClung that they haven't brought back to the table yet for nomination. I believe that's correct. Parks, just wanted vacant position open. We did on HDC. Some nominations for Doug Britling. Greg, next regular meeting. Want to deal with that now before we move on? Mr. DeVito?
So I would move to approve Doug Britling for position four on the HDC.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Britling's in. Mr. Moon?
Does I make a motion to approve Mr. Moon?
For second?
Number five. Second.
Maiden seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Moon's in. Senatorary Commission, Ken Fugate submitted his name for renomination. Last time I spoke to him today, and he was thrilled to get back on it. So if indeed y'all renominated him. So somebody want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I don't have anything on y'all bag. Mrs. Ballance is not here to address it. Deer Hunt Committee, I didn't go make the last one, but I think we got one Thursday. Butch, I believe you were at the last one. If you want to go ahead and fill in.
We're just now trying to contact the state and the State Bow Hunters Association and got their feedback in. We're now trying to get the maps set so we can designate the sites. But we should be all set. The state agreed with our proposal. And so we're just waiting now to get everything all set and bring it back to the council for approval.
Any questions? Just to let you all know, yesterday I was coming around 62, right just past the entrance to end of the Ozarks, and traffic was stopped both ways. And there was probably 30, 40 deer crossing the road. It looked like just a wave going across the highway. And everybody sat there and just watched. And there had to be at least 30, all sizes and all shapes, horns and all. We don't have a deer problem. Okay. Next, we have public comments. Do you have anybody sign up for public? Okay, no public comments. We'll move on to unfinished business. Number one on unfinished business, dog ordinance?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second. He'd move to discuss.
Okay. Maiden seconded. Floor's open. Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we assign a number to this ordinance and put it on its first reading.
Second.
Maiden seconded. Did it sign and read? In the second reading? Is that correct? Second reading?
First.
First reading. Okay. Too many things going on. Okay. Is this a real call vote on this one, Mr. DeVito? Is this a new? Okay.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
5-0. The number will be 2150.
What was the number?
2150.
2150. 2150.
2150.
Ordinance number 2150, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6.04 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs, the city, currently recognizes the need to control dogs within the city. And whereas the City Council believes that Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code needs changes to more effectively deal with this issue, now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, that the following terms and definitions should be added to Section 6.04.01 of the Municipal Code. One, abandon to desert, surrender, forsake, or give up absolutely unknowingly doing so an animal on public or private property. Two, animal control officer, an officer employed by or under contract with an agency of the state, county, municipality, or other governmental or political subdivision of the state that is responsible for animal control operations in its jurisdiction and approved by the City Council, who shall exercise the powers prescribed by this chapter. Three, at large, not under the physical control of the animal's owner or harbinger or his authorized representative either by leash, trolley system, or enclosure. An animal intruding upon or damaging the property of another person or upon public property, trespassing on school grounds, harassing passersby, or passing vehicles, or interfering with refuge collection. Harassing meter readers, and not under the physical control referred to herein, shall be deemed at large. An animal within an automobile or other vehicle shall not be deemed running at large if the animal is physically confined by the vehicle. An animal shall not be considered at large when properly leashed or in an enclosure as defined herein. Four, dangerous animal, any animal which, when unprovoked, approaches in a manner of attack, any person or domesticated animal upon the street, sidewalks, or other public ground or place. Five, dog, a canine of either sex, including one neutered or sterilized. Six, enclosure, a fence or pen or structure forming or causing an enclosure of sufficient strength or construction to contain the specific animal and prevent the animal from escaping. Dogs by means of an enclosure must provide a minimum space of 100 square feet, that is 10 by 10 per dog, six months of age or older. Seven, harbinger, to provide, or one who, for a period of three days or more, keeps and cares for an animal or provides a premises to which the animal returns. Eight, humane officer, animal control officer. Nine, license, a permit and numbered animal tag issued by the city to indicate that an animal is vaccinated against rabies in accordance with city ordinance, and that the owner or harbinger has remitted to the city the levy permit fee. Ten, restrain, any animal secured by a leash and under the physical control of the owner, harbinger. Eleven, tether, a rope chain or cable of appropriate strength that is firmly anchored to the bed of an open bed pickup truck or similar vehicle in at least two places. Tether is to be used to restrain the animal and fasten to the animal by means of a harness or collar, and to be the appropriate length so as to afford the animal freedom to move about the vehicle, but to restrict the animal to set radius to prevent it from reaching either side or the rear of the vehicle so that the animal cannot be thrown from, fall from, or jump from the vehicle. Section 2, that the following definition should be substituted for the definition of vicious animal in Section 6.04.01 of the Municipal Code. Vicious animal, A, any animal which, without provocation, bites or attacks a human being or domestic animal, public or private property, excluding the animal's, animal owner's private property and enclosures when properly restrained. Or, B, any animal owned or harbored primarily or in part for the purpose of animal fighting, or any animal trained for animal fighting. C, any animal with a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked or to cause injury, or otherwise to threaten the safety of humans, domestic animals, on any public or private property. Section 3, that the following should be added to Section 6.04.01 of the Municipal Code. One, notwithstanding the definition of vicious animal, no animal shall be declared vicious if the person attacked or bitten by said animal was teasing, tormenting, abusing, or assaulting the animal, or was committing or attempting to commit a crime. And two, no animal shall be declared vicious if a domestic animal was bitten or attacked, or said animal was teasing, tormenting, abusing, or assaulting the animal, or was committing or attempting to commit a crime.
Section 4, that Section 6.04.02 of the Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. Penalties, A, whenever in this chapter an act is prohibited, or is made or is declared to be unlawful, or an offense or a misdemeanor, or whenever in such chapter the doing of an act is required, or the failure to do any act is declared to be unlawful, and no specific penalty is provided therefore, the violation of any such provision of this chapter shall be punished by a fine of not more than $500, or double that sum for each repetition of such offensive violation. Provided no penalty, shall be greater or less than the penalty provided for the same or a similar offense under the laws of the state. If the violation of the chapter is in its nature continuous in respect to time, the penalty for allowing the continuation thereof shall not exceed $250 for each day that the same is unlawfully continued. B, any person who resides in the city convicted of violating or pleads guilty to a state law, ACA Section 5.62.101, cruelty to animals, may lose the privilege of owning animals within the city limits for up to one year in addition to applicable fines assessed. C, any person violating or failing to comply with any of the provisions of this chapter shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction shall be fined a sum not less than $50, nor more than $500. Each day's violation shall be considered a separate offense. D, any animal determined to be a vicious animal by the district court shall, after 30 days of the entry of judgment ordering the animal destroyed, be humanely put to death unless the owner shall have made provision to keep the animal outside the corporate city limits of the city. All costs of maintaining the animal shall be charged to the owner if he is convicted of maintaining a vicious animal within the corporate limits of the city. Five, that Section A, I'm sorry, Section 6.04.06A of the Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. A, it shall be unlawful to permit any animal to run at large within the city. Section 6, that Section 6.04.06 of the Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following subsections. D, it shall be unlawful for the owner or person having charge of any dog to permit or allow such dog to be properly restrained while on public property or at public events. E, the term permit shall include the failure of the owner or a person having charge of said animal to physically restrain them. The animal control officer shall be authorized to enter upon private property for the purpose of impending an animal found running at large. F, every female dog and heater estrus coming into the next cycle for breeding purposes shall be confined in a building or secure enclosure in such a manner that such female dog cannot come into contact with another animal except for planned breeding. Section 7, that Section 6.4, 6.04.08B of the Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. B, if not revoked, under any of the provisions of this chapter, licenses for dogs and cats shall be for a period of three years from the date of issuance, ending December the 1st of the first, 31st, I'll get it right in a minute, of the applicable year that coincides with the three-year rabies vaccination certificate. There is no prorating of any license fee. Section 8, that Section 6.04.08H of the Municipal Code is hereby amended to include the follows. That's supposed to be following, I believe, isn't it?
I think so.
Okay. Following. The licensing authority will send renewal notices 90 days prior to the expiration month. Section 9, that Section 6.04.08I of the Municipal Code is hereby deleted. Section 10, that the fees in Section 6.04.08J of the Municipal Code are hereby adjusted as follows. Dogs, unaltered, $30. Spain neutered, $10. Cats, unaltered, $30. Spain neutered, $10. Section 11, that Section 6.04.10 of the Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. 6.04.10 restraint, A, when a public property, when on public property where other people might be slash are present, leases shall be of sufficient strength in a maximum of six feet. Should that be length? In the maximum length? Of six feet? B, all dogs shall properly be restrained when outside of any appropriate enclosure or on public property. C, it shall be illegal to maintain any vicious dog or cat within the corporate city limits of the city, regardless of whether or not it is kept under restraint by its owner. Section 12, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance shall be hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 13, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part, or provision, other than that so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and that the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain, shall remaining effect, shall remain in effect. Okay. The end. Yes, Mr. DeVito?
I move to approve ordinance number 2150 on its first reading.
Second.
Real call or voice vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. DeVito?
Because of the time that's been involved in recrafting this ordinance, I would ask council to allow me to place this on its second reading. And then we would have two weeks, and then to approve it on its third reading. So I will move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2150 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Maiden seconded?
That will call.
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Ballance?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
All right. Let's see. Now we got a vote on it, yeah?
Yeah. Read it by title.
Title on it.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2150, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6.04 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code.
We have to vote on it again?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
I'd have to move first. I'd move to approve ordinance number 2150 on its second reading.
Second.
Yes, Mr.?
Discussion.
I'm sorry?
Discussion.
Yes.
Excuse me. In the at-large portion, number three on the first page, says not under the physical control of animals, of the animal's owner or harbinger or his authorized representative, either by leash, trolley system, or enclosure. I would like to see a length for the trolley system. Maybe six foot? Because some of those extend out to 20 or 30 feet. And when a dog is that far away from its owner, it may not be easily controllable. So I would move to... Okay, there's a motion on the table.
I think your trolley, your misreading. The leash is the shorter length. Trolley is a system that they put dogs on to let them walk themselves when they're on their owner's property typically. It's like a clothesline type, sit at them. Except hopefully it's more secure than a clothesline.
Okay. Well, my concern is those leashes that extend. Okay. Well, so if that's not a trolley, then we need to perhaps address the length of the leash. I mean, if somebody has a dog on a 50-foot leash...
If already says six foot?
Yeah, there's a provision at the end.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we're on the second reading. If we vote on the second reading, Mr. DeVito, you've voice voted on this one.
Yes. You did?
No.
No.
We voted to read it.
Yes. We voted to read it.
Yeah.
Now to approve.
Yeah. Now we approve. Okay. Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. That was on the second reading. All right. Mr. Pennell?
Would it be appropriate at this time just to state that the third reading be put on the agenda for the next meeting? Or is that automatic?
It's automatic.
It automatically goes on the table. Okay. Any further discussion on that one? We'll move on. Next on the agenda is the nonconforming off-premise design. My understanding is this is postponed until coding references are corrected?
Yes.
All right. So we can just skip that one without any discussion. Number three, hospital audit report, hospital lease. I believe all of y'all got an email from the hospital commission in reference to what they're trying to get done with Mr. Bordelon and Mr., and the other guy's name slips me right now. Rock is supposed to be the big wheel down in Louisiana, and Chris, and I can't remember their names right now. They're supposed to have a meeting, a phone meeting with them tomorrow, Thursday night, isn't it? Thursday night, phone conference. Yes, sir.
Motion to discuss.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Maybe we postpone this to the first meeting in March.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number four, auditorium commission ordinance review. Person to discuss?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito?
I guess pretty much up to the council whether or not we want to go forward with the commission or not, or what the alternative might be. The committee certainly recommended the commission be established. And we need to do something so we don't end up in the same position we ended up in this year. So we'll get this thing going and under some sort of a board of authority. So we won't be in one boat.
Further?
If we don't approve the commission, we're back to basically continuing on with the committee. You know, we've got to do something here. We have this year of availability in the transition. As Mr. Barry said, the committee that we impaneled recommended forming a commission. So I don't know how you get beyond that. We have to establish some type of governing body over the auditorium unless you want to send it back to committee and see if they come up with any other suggestions. You may end up with the same suggestion again if council doesn't embrace the recommendations of the first committee.
Further? Mr. Pennell?
Well, it's mentioned that the meeting that we approved, the agreement between the CA PC and the city, that we would now have a little bit longer to discuss this. And I agree with the comments. We don't need to leave it in limbo forever. But I'd like to see some, excuse me, financials for 2011 and a little bit in 2012 of where we're paying, and see what kind of position we're going to be in. More towards like the readdressing this around the 1st of April.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Could we possibly hold a joint meeting with council and members of the auditorium committee so that we could sit here and query them as to how they reach that decision? Would that be amenable to council? Would that be amenable to council?
Are you good with that? That way you'll have all the heads sitting at one table.
Do it as a workshop.
Do it as a workshop, yes. Sometime in April.
Most have workshop on the auditorium commission ordinance in April. Want to pick a date? You gonna leave it open right now? Tentative date?
Hi, Ann. Could we instruct the city clerk to find an appropriate time that we, but members of the committee and members of council could get together?
Yes, sir.
In April, yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Berry.
I can note that probably the best time for the committee that I found, when there wasn't any conflict, was usually Sunday afternoon.
For everybody?
Double over.
Usually what we did was we met Sunday afternoon about two or three o'clock for an hour. So just that way we can, and I can provide the clerk with the emails of all the council or the committee members.
Thank you.
To get that out. And it probably need to be a pilgrimage. We'd either need to meet upstairs in the courtroom, or in the auditorium, because it is a, I mean, we're going to have a lot of people theoretically.
That would be the appropriate place, Mr. Penna.
Could we come up with, I know this probably sounds a little net-noid, could we come up with a percentage of both parties that constitutes a reasonable number to have a meeting instead of trying to get a, I don't think we're ever going to get a consensus of a hundred percent on both sides.
We could get a quorum of each.
Eighty percent or something like that.
I think there's just four on the commission, isn't there, on the committee?
I don't remember how many's on the committee, I think there was ten. But if we had five, and you know, if we had a quorum of the council, three or four.
Any further?
I can tell you at this point, we didn't really look at that much of the finances of the auditorium, because that, the last year, two thousand and ten, there wasn't much activity going on, and we didn't even look at it. But we, again, to refresh the council's memory, is the committee recommended that we form a commission with the possibility, if it was not self-sustaining, that we might look at throwing out to the people an eighth of a cent or a quarter of a cent sales tax that would be going toward the operation and paying the utilities, insurance, maintenance. It would also allow a reserve to be going into strictly for physical improvements. And that was basically the recommendation, because we felt that on its own, the auditorium, and historically, most auditoriums are not, and have a hard time being self-sufficient. Most of them are all subsidized and sponsored. That goes from everything from the Little Rock Auditoriums to Walton Arts Center. Walton Arts Center is probably compatible in seating, and they are, of course, sponsored by Walton and the University of Arkansas, so, you know, we didn't see how we could compete with that type of sponsorship. So that's how we ended up, recommendation of throwing it out to the people, the citizens, a sales tax. If they want the auditorium open, then vote on a sales tax to keep it maintained and operating, to take the burden out of the city council, in the cities. Anyway. So I'll get you the information.
Mr. Penna?
Excluding our two representatives from council, I'd like to recommend that someone from the CAPC also do a workshop.
The director of our, the director of the county.
Okay. Your county was part of the committee?
Yes.
Any further on that? So workshop in April. Probably at the auditorium or upstairs. Probably the auditorium.
Auditorium meeting.
If there's nothing going on at night.
Okay. No more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Number five, Mr. Ray Dawson's list of loading and unloading passengers. Motion to discuss.
I move.
Second.
This floor is open.
Have we got a list?
No, but I forwarded, I hope everybody saw the...
I got the letter.
Okay, great. So, no, we've not heard a word.
Postpone?
Postpone.
Give me a date. Next meeting? All in favor postpone the next meeting?
I have a question, I guess. City attorney, if we, if he keeps, if he does not provide the list, is that in violation of the agreement?
I don't think it's a violation until he starts to operate. If he starts to operate and he hadn't provided the list, then it may well be a breach at that point.
So he could continue to ignore or not respond, I should say.
He's not operating at this time, so I don't believe he's in physical or an actual breach, because the, he's not done anything that's changed from when the council is fresh.
But it'd be appropriate if we sent him a second notice? Would that help our standing?
I would think that'd be very appropriate.
I move to amend the motion to have the clerk send a second notice, a second request.
Second. I would stipulate it that it'd be a certified letter.
It was the first time.
It was, okay.
And so we don't keep beating a dead horse that we have it by the next meeting?
I'm happy to make the request.
I make the request. I think that's what the last letter was, that we were to have the, this time.
Any further? Okay. Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Postpone the next meeting. All right, number six on the unfinished business is a handicap parking ordinance, second reading.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Mr. Penna?
Move to put ordinance twenty-one forty-nine on its second reading by title.
Did we get a second?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
I didn't hear the second on the discussion part.
I seconded.
You did, okay. Couldn't hear you. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I move that we read ordinance twenty-one forty-nine, suspend the rules, and read ordinance twenty-one forty-nine by title only.
Second.
You did a real call on that, you did a real call.
Ms. Ballance.
Yes.
Mr. Pownell.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yeah.
Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Six zero. What is from?
He had his...
I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought you had your hand up.
I did.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Move to approve ordinance twenty-one forty-nine on its second reading.
The title.
I'm sorry.
Need to go ahead and read the title.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-nine, an ordinance to amend chapter eight of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code.
All right, sir. Go ahead.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-one forty-nine on second reading.
Second.
May I be seconded? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Number seven is Mr. Doug Milligan's car, which was submitted a couple of meetings ago. I think the council voted no action at one time. He asked me to put it back on for consideration, reconsideration. This is the gentleman who had his car damaged by a flying sign across the park, uh, flying sign across, I'll get it right in a minute. A sign flying across the parking lot in about a forty mile an hour wind damaged his car. He asked the council to reconsider. Dysphagia there. Mr. Penna?
Move to discuss.
Second.
May I be seconded? Discussion's open. Mr. Penna?
On the estimates and prices that we have, what is the bottom line, again, that of the damage less, what the insurance would pay, and what amount we are considering at this table?
My understanding, sir, is he submitted on his insurance statement is exactly the number that we have to work with. And that's the six twenty-five seventy-one. I've been given no other figures other than that one. And that's the one I told him I'd resubmit for y'all's consideration. And here we are. Yes, sir?
That's the one that, if I'm looking at the preliminary estimate copy that said that the grand total to fix was six twenty-five seventy-one, no deductible, no customer pay, insurance would pay six twenty-five seventy-one, so I'm still lost of what we're being asked to pay.
He's probably wanting his money back from his insurance, because they're probably going to try to thump him for it. I have not had any contact with Mr. Milligan since our last meeting. I did tell him at that time we'd resubmit it, and here we are. Mr.?
I would like to read out of the state code and ask for the city attorney's interpretation based on the fact that he is filing a claim after he's already involved his insurance company in Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen fifty-eight three oh five, payment of claims. In a city of the first class, the mayor is duly authorized representative, may approve for payment out of funds previously appropriated for that purpose, or disapprove any bills, debts, or liabilities asserted as claims against the city. B, municipal governing body shall by ordinance establish in that connection a maximum amount as to the payment or disapproval of such bills, debts, or liabilities exceeding that amount shall require the confirmation of the governing body. Due to apparent lack of any ordinance that limits what the mayor can approve, the verbiage to me would say that we can approve it, but I don't know if we're in a position to approve something that's already been paid for by an insurance company. If he had to come straight to us, because he didn't want his insurance rates to go up or whatever, then I could have kind of seen it, but this being after the fact, I have a little bit of trouble even following the state code.
Well, first of all, the state code is talking about using a fund that has been pre-set up by council. My understanding is there is no pre-set up fund by this council, never has been. So the mayor has no money in which to pay, one. Two, it would be in conflict with the tort immunity to pay it. Three, if his insurance company has paid, and you pay him, you may be putting him in a position for the insurance company to either sue him or prosecute him for taking money that's not his. If the insurance company is coming to ask, that's not what you got for you, but that's what would appear to be. It's not appropriate to pay him if his insurance company has already paid the money. And the document you have shows insurance payment, no copayment, no deductible from the owner. That may not be what's reality, but that's what's on the paper that's submitted to me.
Yes, sir? Ms. Ballance?
I have a couple of questions. Was this a witnessed accident?
I think he witnessed it. I'll have to go back. It's in the police report that you should have attached to the...
Were there any other witnesses? Anybody that's not directly involved? Anybody that can corroborate his story?
I'll have to go back and look at it also. Have to refresh myself on this. Apparently there are no witnesses listed on here.
No witnesses. Just his word that this is what happened.
According to the statement in here, it says Sherri Milligan stayed at the barricade, blew into her car, and broke the taillight. The damage on her vehicle matched the height of the sign. This is the officer's observation. Milligan was parked in the center section of the parking lot, spaced seventy-four. Vehicle was facing south. The sign was blown across the lot from north to south, hit the rear car, and scratched the paint. The end.
So they're...
Any other witnesses outside? The husband and wife, no, apparently not.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. My other question, I guess, would be directed to the attorney. What happens if we decided to pay this to this gentleman? What would then happen if the insurance company then came to us and said, "We want you to pay for this"?
Well, it would become an issue of whether we waived our tort immunity, but it would also become an issue of whether they would have a prosecutable offense against the owner for taking money if they were already made whole by their insurance. Could place them in jeopardy also, but it could place the city in jeopardy of waiving the immunity.
Let me state a fact that, from the time the inception of this thing, the first time I talked to Mr. Milligan, I told him over and over and over, he needed to come here and face the council with this matter. He kept saying it's not convenient for him to take off work. That went on and on. On eleven twenty-one eleven, I spoke to Mr. Milligan and told him he needed to come back to the council and face him and tell him his story. Didn't feel like I needed to be the go-between. And Mr. Milligan has not done so yet, so here we are. I fulfill my promise in getting it before the council? Yes, sir?
You know, I don't see any difference between the big wind blowing a tree over that's on city property on top of somebody's car, you know, unless that can be proved that, you know, we were shirking our responsibility somehow, you know, forty, forty-five mile an hour winds, that's an act of God as far as I'm concerned, and I don't see any need on our part to be paying for it.
Any further, Mr. Penna?
I make a motion, based on the facts that we have before us on this date, not to take any further action.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll notify him again. All right. Under new business. Number one, to set date for workshop to review rewrite animal drone vehicle requirements. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Yes, sir?
I'm going to say postpone until the second meeting.
Okay. Second meeting, favorite. All right, there's no need to discuss it then. All right, thank you. Number two, discussion of emissions reduction plan. Motion to discuss.
I move. Second.
Floor is open. Ms. Ballance and Mr. Raphael. Mr.?
I was hoping Mr. Landrum would be here to speak to us about this. I have not contacted anybody else.
Let me count a few again. We did have a meeting, a telephone conference with Mr. Landrum, Glenna, Diane, and myself. I talked to Mr. Nick Brown via telephone conference. Mr. Brown showed us some of his ideas from that end. We showed him some from ours on this end. Mr. Landrum was very pleased when he left the meeting. I did not know that he was not going to be here. We made some good suggestions on our end to try to, try some ideas that we thought would work for the city to green it up some, maybe a little work on the sewer plant to cover the dome or cover the... Maybe a little work on the sewer plant to cover the dome or cover the pit, as they call it, with the dome, to recycle the methane gas and the, all the other gases that emit from it, and to give a little more aesthetic quality so you don't drive out 23 north and see the bubbles. Talked a little more about composting. Unfortunately, Mr. Brown, he, he was talking some big numbers way out of our price range for recycling sludge. He was talking about big incinerators, big furnaces to the tune of $5 million and up. So we told him, but probably not be feasible here in our city at this time until we get a little further into this thing. If you would like for Mr. Landrum to come up and address the council next time, you can postpone this one, and we can make sure that he tries to get here, or he can contact you individually, whichever you prefer.
I'd rather him come for us and discuss this a little bit.
Second.
Because of the weather and that. Yes, sir. One of the other things that has come out of at least the early meetings that I went to is how flexible some of the guidelines versus the national standards that have to be followed in the HDC. I'd like, if at all possible, if we could get somebody from HDC at that same meeting to see what some of the claims that have been made that are going to be costing so to follow guidelines versus standards. Okay, we're going to work on that one also. So is this, entertain the motion postponed till next meeting?
I move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll postpone next meeting with attendance thereof. And next we have number three, discussion of license fee for apartment buildings. Move to discuss.
Second.
May I second it? Floor is open.
I failed to send the clerk any, any information, but again, what I was thinking of was using something similar to what we had, and I don't have my notes in front of me on this one. Having a set fee for apartments. And then having another fee of, say, maybe $25 or something. I guess what I'm going to have to do is ask to defer this, and let me get my notes back together and bring this back for the council again.
Okay. Take it as a motion to postpone. Second.
Second.
Mr. Pennell, you have some questions, sir? Well, we had, the clerk had provided some B and B tourist lodging figures to go along with what Mr. Berry said in postponing this. I think we need to look at what, if there are apartment complexes in town that are government-run or subsidized versus private, and then maybe a range of, if they have one or two apartments that they're, I think the attempt is to be able to get a lock on these legally non-competing apartment buildings and have a, maybe a breakout. So I just bring that up, that we do have a figure between 75 and 125 that do we need to maybe consider while we're waiting to bring it up to the table and maybe a scale of, sliding scale, how many that particular applicant may have as far as apartments. One person may have two or three apartments, and another one may have a total evaporation of 25. The rate ought to be the same, but that's just something to consider before the next meeting. Anybody else? Okay, motion to postpone till next meeting so Mr. Berry can get his facts together and Mr. Pennell's consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carried. All right. Number four is discussion of state and BKD audits. Those should probably be split into two separate issues. If you want to talk about one tonight, one next time, or separate them out, add this under number 11. Motion to discuss it. Move to discuss item four, state postponing BKD till next meeting.
Second.
Postpone state?
Postpone BKD.
BKD, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to discuss state.
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, go ahead, discussion's open, I'm sorry. Okay. Lonnie, you want to address this issue? Thank you.
I assume everyone has a copy. And the audit itself courses of every department. It's got a lot of information in there, but I would, if you want to read the numbers, that's all fine. But I think what you may be really interested in are the notes to the financial statements, which you'll find in, within the, the audit report itself. And then there's a, was considered a management letter that is written to the mayor and the council members, and it's two pages. The one I have is dated September the 27th. And just running down it, it talks about how they audited, what their responsibilities are, the planning and the scope of the audit, excuse me, and significant audit findings. And I think that's the real meat of the entire audit, is reporting back to the mayor and you all, the audit findings that are significant, that need some attention, or things that don't need attention particularly. Under the significant audit findings, they have qualitative aspects of accounting practices. So then they go in and tell what the management is responsible for and so on and so forth, and the difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And their, their statement is, "We encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit, so there was no interference of any sort." And they were given all records that they asked for. And everything was okay. And then corrected and uncorrected misstatements. And it says, "Management has corrected all such misstatements. If there was a, was an error that they found somewhere, these have been corrected." And it says, "In addition, none of the misstatements detected as a result of audit procedures corrected by management were material, either individually or in the aggregate to the financial statements taken as a whole." So anything that they found was, was evidently insignificant, and it was corrected. Moving on to page two, disagreements with management.